The heels. Is that near kids?
Is it bread? Okay, the bread.
Yep. Or like strap skirts, not like it's like perfect, but still fine. Kids don't eat it. That's what I eat.
Like a fool cough.
Just a little bit. Kids are like.
That's how I am.
I get the fresh leaves and I get the old green when they stop eating. So that's ended up like being the trash reactor.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council Meeting for November the 15th of 2023. I look around and I see that all council members are present, so we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the pledge of allegiance, followed up by an invocation, if you would like to remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation tonight is going to be delivered by Mr. Frank Robinson.
Good evening, council. Would you please bow your heads and join me in prayer? Father, sometimes we don't know how to ask you the things we want to ask. And sometimes we can't even find the right words to tell you what we are feeling. Thank you so much for giving us your spirit to speak on our behalf, especially in those times. You know our deepest thoughts, and you see what's in our heart. Please meet us where we are and let us feel your presence. As King Solomon wrote, "A wise man will hear an increase in learning, and a man of understanding will acquire wise counsel." Lord bless our leaders with great wisdom and look upon them with favor. And Lord, please protect our citizens and our civil servants. Keep them from harm's way as they serve our community. God, please bless the great state of Texas and the United States of America. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right, we're going to move on to Citizens Forum, item number five. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. First up, we have Ms. Gwen Withrow.
So which direction is the council?
You're looking at it.
You're looking at it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I addressed you.
Would you lower the mic?
Yes, I probably do need to. Thank you so much. Well, I am Gwen Withrow. And good evening. I thank the Honorable Mayor and distinguished city council members for their service and for allowing me to speak. I normally would not use such a venue to introduce myself as candidate for the Montgomery County Republican Chair, but felt the need, as my opponent did appear last meeting. My name is Gwen Withrow, and I have represented Montgomery County for the last three and a half years as the State Republican Executive Committee Woman for Senate District Four. In this role, I have attended the county Republican meetings of the party and have personally witnessed the dysfunction and division of the party and have worked hard to resolve this problem. After interviewing our chairman, the Republican Party of Texas mediation team identified the cause of the local party problems as a total failure of leadership by our current chairman. I concur with this assessment, and so I have stepped up to serve. As a member of the SREC, I was tasked with making sure that county chairmen throughout the state received the training needed to fulfill their duties. I therefore have been attending county chairman training for many years and have noted that our current chairman here in Montgomery County does not attend this training. Further training would ensure the ideal that the chairman of the party is supposed to work with the precinct chairs to ensure all viewpoints are heard and the majority vote is honored. I have a great deal of business, leadership, and political experience. I have been asked to run for the chair of the party by the majority of the precinct chairs, and if elected, I will follow the laws of our state and the rules of our party, provide fair leadership. This is the only way to unite the party. In closing, I want to make it clear that if I am elected, all elected officials and candidates will be treated fairly and with the respect they are due. I believe putting yourself forward to serve the community and provide voters with choices on the ballot is a patriotic duty, and I honor all who do this. I am willing and qualified to fill the position of county chair, and if elected, I will provide the much-needed leadership for the county party and will move past the warfare and confusion that currently exists. Unlike Chairman Christ, neither myself nor any of the family members or my family members will benefit financially in any way from my position as chairman. I appreciate your time and again thank each of you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Luis Pedrosa.
Hello. My name is Luis Pedrosa, and I'm precinct chair for 110, which is in Conroe. And I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to speak. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I applied for precinct chair February of 2002, and through a process, vetting process and interview process, I was elected or I was appointed to the precinct chair for 110. It was a pretty long process, and I couldn't figure out why, why are we going through all this trouble to vet these people? And there's a reason for that, right? So I'll get to that later. But basically, the current chairperson, Chris, is appointing people through Zoom calls. We never get to talk to them, we never get to interview them, and we never, when they voted on me, they asked me questions and all that kind of stuff. So I thought it was a pretty thorough process, but he's totally forgotten that process and decided to do Zoom calls to appoint people, which is one of the big problems we have. But I was a supporter of Brian Chris in the beginning. I voted for him. I met him once, and I thought, well, he seems like a decent guy, and he is a decent guy. What I didn't know at the time is that his wife owned a political consulting company. And it appears, I can't necessarily prove it, I don't have any data to back this up, but it appears that she benefited from him being elected as county chairperson or man. And so I feel like he has a conflict of interest with his wife and her company and him being the chairperson. So over time, he started doing things that really upset me in terms of how he was running the party. He had always said, "I just call balls and strikes." That's what his function was. But he did more than that in our July organizational meeting. He really set the meeting, he wouldn't allow it to go forward. We approved an agenda through the majority, but having people kept coming in with different motions to obstruct the meeting, and essentially, we never, we never even got past getting the agenda on. So it was pretty frustrating. At that point, I knew that really my support wasn't warranted at first for him. So I switched over to this other, the Freedom Caucus Group is what we call ourselves. The other thing is, he raises no funds for the Republican Party. The other thing I was, I noticed that he does a lot of fundraising for his PAC, but not for the Republican Party. And I just feel like that's definitely a conflict. He didn't seem to really be interested in raising money for us. Oops, am I off?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Robert Holden.
Yes, Sir Robert Holden. This is more of a 30,000-foot view. I don't think this is about party. I don't think it's about the Republican Party. I think this is about honesty and integrity in our chosen service. I did make notes, thank God. Okay. Gwen, I've known for some time because I do make the state conventions, and she is my SD chairman at the state level. I read his writings, Chris's writings, and they are outlandishly untrue. Very creative. I attend meetings for both, and he is essentially a dictator in his meetings. He's running a scam for some reason. The party no longer has a headquarters in Montgomery County. Montgomery County is important for the state and nationally for our elections. And I haven't decided whether this is only about him making money or if it's about a larger agenda, because apparently there are 40 counties in the state with similar problems. And if we disrupt Montgomery County, we can have an impact on the state and the national elections. He has taken the office equipment, given some of it away or sold it. I have no idea where the records historically for the party are. There is no party headquarters. I know not where the remaining equipment is, obviously. He obviously does not want the party to unite, because in addition to attending both, I have talked with him one-on-one about uniting the party, and clearly, he has no intent to do so. I want a unified party. And he is not serving the state, this country, as well as not serving the party. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it was nice to meet Petra.
Next speaker.
Mayor, can I make a point? I think it's inappropriate if we're going to attack somebody personally that's not here. That I understand everybody wants to speak about position and that type of thing, but I...
I agree.
I know in the past that we've kind of geared our meetings to where we don't do character assassination of an individual. Is there any way that we can, let's talk about the position, not about the person? There shouldn't be a personal attack against somebody that's not here to defend themselves or have that opportunity to do.
I agree. I think, I'm going to ask the people present, if they are going to make comments, just to be civil in the way you express them. I think it's not fair to attack someone who's not here to defend themselves, so.
Point of inquiry?
No. Council inquiry is not a point of inquiry, not a...
You can express yourself when you have, when it's your turn, sir. Next is Mr. Dale Inman.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. And thanks for that word. That was my kind of spiel tonight, was, many of you know the chair, and maybe you didn't know this, we were personal friends before politics, our families, my wife's here, we'd go to dinner together. I speak highly of him as a person. There are some business deals he's involved with. I brought him into those business deals, looking for people, said, hey, here's some business, some business we can do together. And I'm not going to speak poorly of him as an individual. I say that because I think I have a unique perspective, is having social friends with him prior to politics and then being involved in politics, and as well as being the State Republican Executive Committee man for Senate District Four, from here to basically Bolivar. We have these meetings in the State Republican Party. We have, I've begged, I've put texts and emails for unity in the party. I think there's a, a lot of us can come together and work hard and work aggressive and keep the community we have here in Montgomery County. A few weeks ago, Senator Cruz called me, about 10 of us had breakfast. He said, "I need you to pull Montgomery County together. Montgomery County is critical." The chair, I asked one time, is friends, can we talk? Can we sit down? No. Is fellow political people, can we work together? No. My last response was, is Christian brothers, can we sit down in a room, you and I, figure out a path forward and solve this and show the world how Christians lead? His response was, "My lawyer told me don't speak to you." I don't know where I go after that. We did ask for mediation from the state party, and I only read this as a quote, and I'm sure, maybe you've seen this, I can get copies of this, from the state party, said, "Ultimately, the rift is a result of complete failure of leadership." This is the state party letter, and I'll make a copy if you'd like this, of Chairman Christ. "CECs across the state frequently have factions or disputes. That's normal. It's the chair's job to find a pass, a path through those disputes and work for both sides. Mr. Chris has not failed in his principal duty, but seemed entirely uninterested in solving the problems. On questioning, he offered no solutions, no explanations of how things got this far. It's unfortunate for the precinct chairs and for Republican voters of Montgomery County if he continues in this vein. Ultimately, the voters of the county will need to replace him next cycle, barring further action from him." That's a disinterested third party that didn't know his name six months ago. They came down, state-level mediation, and said there's a complete lack of failure leadership. Guys, I love the Republican Party, I love Montgomery County, and I'm urging all people to really consider whether you, I said I won't speak evil of Brian Christ. I won't. I'll speak decent of him as an individual. But having said that, we need new leadership. We'll be in the same position two years from today as we are today. So whether you like him or not, it's simply a matter of, we need to go a different direction. And so I'd urge you, and I'd ask people at home too, to really consider, do we want two more years of this, or should we try something different? Thank you so much, God bless you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Kim Weber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and citizens. My name is Kim Weber, and I serve as Montgomery County Precinct Chair 97 and as Vice President of the Montgomery County Freedom Caucus. My constituents elected me knowing I'm a conservative, and they expect me to represent them, to uphold and to advance conservative principles. The Freedom Caucus consists of conservative precinct chairs, in which we hold the majority. Chairman Christ uses his position to overrule the majority by violating Montgomery County Republican Party bylaws and Republican Party of Texas rules. He has embarrassed the local party, and he has lost the faith and trust of the majority of the local Montgomery County Republican Party County Executive Committee. Brian's wife, Kristen, is a highly-paid political consultant with her company, Southern Heritage Consulting. She runs the campaigns of several high-profile elected officials here in Montgomery County. It is our strongly-held belief that Kristen's clients use Chairman Christ and his position to remove accountability and transparency from the CEC. It seems like Brian and Kristen Christ are Montgomery County's Joe and Hunter, because they are compromised and use their position for Kristen's clients to gain influence over the local party. Brian Christ is nothing more than a puppet with Kristen's clients pulling the strings. The quiet part was even said out loud at a victory party for one of Kristen's clients, that precinct chairs who didn't support him need to be gone. Apparently, that was the clarion call for Brian's wife to actively recruit challengers for conservative precinct chairs, not because they weren't doing their jobs, but because they didn't support all of her clients and her husband. Kristen's efforts have been thwarted in the last two elections, because she has recruited some people that had never even voted in a Republican primary. Chairman Christ is incapable of leading the Montgomery County Republican Party and chairing the County Executive Committee without bias, as he has to protect his wife's financial interests. It's a family business and extremely toxic to the Montgomery County Republican Party. Please do your research when it comes to voting for the position of county chair. Do you want a county chair whose motives are pure, with a background of experience, candor, and can lead the county executive committee without bias? Or do you want a county chair that puts himself and his wife's financial interests and clients ahead of the majority and is intent on replacing conservative, hard-working precinct chairs with those that are Republican and...
Next speaker, Allison Winter.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Allison Winter, and I am the vacancy chair for Montgomery County Republican Party, as well as the precinct chair for precinct 59 here in the Woodlands. I am really passionate about my work, I always have been within Montgomery County Republican Party, and I have a lot of ideas for improving the party. Yet sadly, our time energy was totally consumed this biennium with what next disruptive action would be taken. It was total chaos. In spite of this being a difficult biennium, I am proud to say that we have appointed 26 outstanding precinct chairs to fill the existing vacancies this biennium. The vacancy committee works very hard, and we vet, and we recruit, and we interview, which Mr. Pedrosa was talking about, it's a process. And we want really outstanding people to serve as precinct chairs, and we have got a slew of talented people. However, this biennium, I'm going to try to not be tactful, we have had a situation where precinct chairs have been appointed on top of already properly-seated precinct chairs, and in some cases, even months later. We have had the refusal of our chairman to report the names of the properly-appointed precinct chairs to the Texas Secretary of the State, which is a statutory duty of a county chair. There has been email voting invoked by this other side, and they do this by emails, which we've never done before, our bylaws don't allow for that, and they did this because they could not reach the 33.33% quorum needed to appoint precinct chairs. Precinct chair resignations have been hidden from us and to keep power. And when we have discovered it, we copied the RPT officials on it, on the emails, and then it was exposed, and then our chairman complied. So this must sound like mass chaos to y'all, and it has been. And it's been hard to bear up under it. But we stand for principles and rules, and that's what we are following. And we expect our whole party and our county chairman to do that as well. I would like to say that, I'll skip that part. Finally, I am, I do want to say that I did participate in the mediation, that is actually a year and two months ago, and we had a chance then to correct things, and there was no interest in unifying our party. And that was a big disappointment. But finally, I am thrilled that we do have an outstanding conservative candidate like Gwen Withrow, and she has a great deal of...
Thank you. Next speaker, Esther Lum.
Good evening, council. I'm very concerned about where our nation is headed. In particular, the way that leaders in the Republican Party, like Ronna McDaniel, seem more concerned about staying in power than taking action to secure elections and restrain the madness of leftist policies. But this strong desire to maintain power is not limited to the national stage. A few weeks ago, the chairman of the Montgomery County Republican Party stood right here and asked for your support in his bid for reelection next year. Now, he acknowledged that there is strife in the party, and he blamed it on, quote, "the doctrine of the lesser magistrate," which I'll explain in a moment. He said that this doctrine was the reason he was dragged before the Texas Supreme Court. However, if you actually read the filings in that case, it's clearly a factual dispute about how he conducted meetings and his alleged violations of the Texas Election Code. The case number is 23-0127, if any of you want to look it up. Now, the documents filed in this case on both sides make zero mention of the lesser magistrate doctrine. And that's a doctrine that says that when a higher civil authority makes an unjust or immoral law, the lesser authority has a duty to refuse to obey those laws. Instead, Brian Christ claimed that one faction of the state GOP, not the county, had adopted a rule which was the first step in abolishing the primary, and that he, Brian Christ, would be the heroic lesser magistrate and stand in the gap against that rule. So instead of addressing the numerous allegations of failed leadership in conducting meetings or filling precinct chair vacancies, he muddied the waters, and he would have you believe that it's all about a state GOP rule that could potentially lead to abolishing primaries. That is nonsense. Now, recently, prominent voices have called on Ronna McDaniel to resign because of the party's disastrous losing streak since 2017. And I agree. And because Brian Christ's leadership of the local party has resulted in complete and unprecedented chaos, I think he should resign also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Melinda Olin.
Olin.
Olin, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm precinct chair for precinct 59 in Magnolia, and I came in May of 2021, I believe. So I experienced firsthand the conflict of interest between our chairman, Brian Christ, and his wife's company. Because I did not support Charlie Riley in his reelection campaign, then I had to be, well, voted out. So they had an opponent run against me. So I was doing my job, you know, to get voters out to vote, blockwalking for candidates, getting to know people in my precinct. And so also, when I started too, it was utter chaos. And, but I stuck with it, and meetings would go on for so long, there was just so much chaos and disruption and everything. So I agree, we do need a change, you know, coming up, the elections in March, and I think we have a very good candidate in Gwen Withrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mary J. Huddnall.
My name is Mary Jo Huddnall, and I live in Montgomery, Magnolia. I was asked to read unanimous call for a vote of no confidence by the majority members of the precinct chairs, but it's way too long to read in three minutes, so I'll give you a couple of the highlights. The, whereas Brian Christ is elected, it's titled, "A Call for a Vote of No Confidence in County Chair Brian Christ." Whereas Chairman Brian Christ is elected by the Republican voters of Montgomery County to represent the county party in a fair and impartial manner. And whereas the county chair is elected as presiding officer of the county executive committee, and whereas Chairman Brian Christ has caused and created division, acrimony, irreparable harm to Montgomery County Republican Party name, their name, by effectively dividing the party into two entities. And then this resolution includes about 21 different items, and most of them have to do with Robert Rules of Order, not sending qualified and voted-on precinct chairs to the Secretary of State. But after the 21 items that we referred to, the balance of it is therefore let be resolved that the CEC members call for a vote of no confidence in Chairman Brian Christ on this day, January 3rd, 2023. Let it also be resolved that the CEC members call for the immediate resignation of Chairman Brian Christ. Brian Crist for the good of the Republican Party of Montgomery County and the state of Texas. Further, let it be resolved that a copy of this vote of no confidence be referred to as the Republican Party of Texas, referred to the Republican Party of Texas, and that the Montgomery County Republican Party demands that the state executive committee take action in accordance with TEC 171.029, and declares that Chairman Crist has abandoned the chair. I've known Gwen Withrow for about two years now, and I'm here to let you and everybody know that she's fair, impartial, balanced, she knows the rules of the Republican Party of Texas, she's served in many capacities in our Republican Party. Interestingly, Brian Crist has never been a precinct chair, and he never, no one's ever seen him at a county executive committee until he was elected, which is quite outstanding.
Thank you. Next speaker is Betty Anderson.
I have a summary of a mediation report. This is about Matt Rinaldi, KCP and State Republican Party Chairman. Try to meditate. And if there's anyone else who would have more confidence, if anyone else wants a copy.
Okay, who's timing me?
You're on the clock. You're on the clock.
Okay, all right. All right. I am Betty Anderson, and I am the Precinct 31 GOP chair for over seventeen years. This is my precinct, this is the room where I conduct elections when I'm election judge. I've attended almost every Republican Party Executive Committee meeting for over twenty-seven years, almost every one, as an eyewitness and/or a precinct chair. I was chairman of Christian Coalition back in the nineties, and president of Eagle Forum ever since 2008. I'm here to tell you, there's always been division of opinion within the party, you're just going to have that in political parties, because there are always going to be some precinct chairs that are pro-establishment, top-down leadership, and there are some that are grassroots, bottom-up, weed-the-people leadership. So we're going to see differences of opinion. We see this locally across state and nation within political party structure. And for the record, just so that you know, neither I nor any of my family members have ever taken a cent from a candidate or a contractor for any of my personal endorsements. In fact, I'm a donor, not a receiver, and you know that. I have to say that for the past twenty-seven years, I've never seen such extremely poor leadership by a Republican Party chairman. This role is to chair the legitimate executive committee, and it's composed here in Montgomery County of up to one hundred and eleven voting precinct chairs. We've had dodged party rules, bylaws, Robert's Rules of Order, and we need to have reported properly the vetted precinct chair appointments, and that too often has not been done properly or legally or ethically. And it seems to me that this organization and the communication and negotiating skills are greatly lacking. A majority of executive committee members and officers, including me, did file a petition for a writ of mandamus with the Texas Supreme Court. There were over fifty solid declarations or complaints.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Donna McAlire.
I'm Donna McAlire. I'm the GOP Precinct 61 chair, I'm also the Woodlands Mud 60 director. Unfortunately, it's true, Chairman Brian Crist closed our local Republican Party headquarters in Conroe after decades of local Republican campaigns, party history, and get-out-the-vote efforts. On April 2nd, 2023, Chairman Crist announced without prior notice to the conservative majority executive committee that the landlord had suddenly ended our month-to-month lease at 310 Metcalf Street in downtown Conroe. Precinct chairs were notified afterwards that the party headquarters had been closed down and cleaned out, and we believe the cleanout started around March 26th, so he actually notified us after they had already cleaned it out. Memorabilia collected over the years by former chairman, Dr. Wally Wilkerson, had been given to his family members. Montgomery County Republican Party Treasurer Charles Shirley had paid the rent through the end of April 30th, 2023, but the landlord refused to talk or negotiate with him because only Chairman Crist's name was on the lease. We have documentation and receipts for these monthly payments, so in other words, it had been closed, and we had already paid through the end of the month, and they had closed it, you know, at the end of March. So without notice, Chairman Crist and some of his supporters took it upon themselves to disperse and dispose of the contents of the headquarters. Some of the items were even donated to another county Republican Party rather than being turned over to our county executive committee. They had the key, but they had no authority to do this. Every duly-elected and appointed precinct chair should have been given the advance notice and allowed to vote on this decision. When asked to provide the location of certain items, Chairman Crist refused to share the information in violation of our bylaws until later. Some of the unaccounted-for items were a television for eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is brand-new, office tables, also brand-new, three thousand two hundred dollars, and displays for one thousand one hundred dollars. We believe the estimated value is well over five thousand dollars that we can trace. We found out later that the television and office tables were donated to the Waller County Republican Party. Unfortunately, the party will now be forced to fundraise and repurchase items that were donated to other organizations or returned to the original donors. So I feel there's a good reason why the executive committee members have a low trust level regarding our party chairman's activities. Many of us believe it's way past time for our county chairman to resign and have Gwen Withrow be elected in instead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Stephanie Cox.
Mayor and members of the city government, I thank you for allowing me to talk to you today. My name is Stephanie Cox, and I am the precinct chair for Precinct 98, just in the Woodlands over here. Speaking in regard to Chairman Crist, I was duly-elected and appointed by the majority of the Republican Party Executive Committee in August of 2022. I am one of those that were not reported to the Secretary of State, and I have been serving as the precinct chair. However, I've yet to be recognized by the chair, who refuses to add my name to the precinct chair list for the Secretary of State. He claims that the organizational meeting where my election by the majority of the body occurred was invalid, and our original organization meeting in July, which he improperly adjourned in the continuation of that meeting in August, Chairman Crist repeatedly ignored members of the body on their points of order, ignoring Robert's Rules of Order, and because the majority would not stand for it, he left the meeting. The body has a right to continue the business of the CEC, which they did, even as the chair decided to leave. In September of 2022, at the JP3 meeting, he was overruled by the body for again not recognizing duly-elected precinct chairs. At the end of the same month, you heard that the state party attempted mediation to bring this issue to an end. After four hours of mediation with the state party chair and his staff, when an agreement was apparently reached, Chairman Crist was unwilling to, in the end, give up those compromises on his stance, leaving several duly-elected and appointed precinct chairs without recourse. His continual ignoring of the rules and bylaws was the reason behind the writ of mandamus. You can go to our party website, mctxGOP.org, for more details on all of these points. Meanwhile, in the last year, those duly-appointed precinct chairs have been, including myself, have been doing the work of the party, fundraising, blockwalking, working the polls during election season, and bringing awareness to the important legislation and issues within our community. I think it's important to set the record straight and let you know, and the public know, that the chairman of our local Republican Party may say he stands for the rule of law, but in reality, he has disregarded it when it comes to the operation of the party. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Robert Walker.
Thank you, members of the council, for letting me come here today and speak for you. My name is Robert Walker, and I'm the Precinct 87 GOP chair. I'm also a member-at-large of the Steering Committee for the Republican Party of Montgomery County, and I'm also the Rules Committee Chair. And Mr. Fletcher, you brought up a point earlier when this Citizens Forum started, that Mr. Crist was not here to defend himself against this. What you're seeing here today is the precinct chairs defending themselves from when you didn't call out Mr. Crist when he came before you at your last meeting and spoke against the county executive committee members in a bad light. So it should be reciprocated. It should also be known that two of the members of this Shenandoah City Council have endorsed Mr. Crist in his run for reelection as county chair, and I hope that you reconsider what you've done by endorsing him after hearing exactly how he's run the show at the party over the last year and a half. I was also a member of the mediation team that, trying to get the party back together, and the chairman refused, because it was the KECC body, against what the county chairman himself, it wasn't a group of other people, it was the county chairman himself, and he refused to sit down and come to an agreement with everybody and get the party going again. The, nearly three years ago, eighty-seven hundred dollars of party funds and approximately nine thousand dollars of in-kind donations were given to renovate the headquarters, and almost eighteen thousand dollars total was spent, many hours of people's labor putting in to do the revisions for the party headquarters, and no securing of the leash was done on Mr. Crist's part to try to secure that for a number of years down the road, the money was just spent. And then, since then, Mr. Crist let the, accused the party of not paying the rent, let the-
Next speaker is Ms. Nada Henry. Am I pronouncing that right?
My name's Nada Henry, and I'm precinct chair for 108, and I'm here just to tell you a little bit about me. I've been involved for the last two and a half to three years on the Republican Fundraiser Committee. I have put on, helped to put on two golf tournaments and one gala that was quite successful without an appearance of Brian Crist. No sponsorship help, it was just all the precinct chairs that wanted to succeed and make money for get-out-the-vote. I'm also a committee person on that as well, and we printed out voter guides, all without his assistance or help. I don't see a leadership in that quality. I have tried to find good things to say, but right now, we need a change. We need a leader that will, first of all, get us all together. Our county is getting very liberal, and it's because of this divisiveness. No one believes in the right way, and not going by rules when you're a leader is detrimental to the whole group, and that's what we're seeing right now. I was also a member of the petitioners for the writ of mandamus. I believe in the rule of law, and I think that definitely elected official should also go by those rules. So I'm asking for reconsideration of endorsements, and also consideration of someone that would be good for the party, and I think precinct chairs should know who that person might be, and what we need to go and build and grow our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that completes the Citizens Forum portion of our agenda. Thank you all for being here and for speaking. We're going to move on to item number six, presentation of the annual pool report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Susie Mason, I'm the Assistant Pool Operator. I'm up here today because Woody Crosby has retired, I hope she's enjoying her retirement. I've had the privilege of training under her wing for the last few years, so I hope to continue her good service. She's been such an icon at the pool, I know she's going to be really missed. So we submitted the pool report with part of the agenda, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
You guys continue to make, just do a fantastic job, and I just want to just give you a big hand, and I know, you know, Woody's been fantastic in the service, and she's, she really is so happy with the work you've done, and of course, I've been able to see that firsthand this past several summers, and so I look forward to you continuing on in that, continuing to help our pool stay one of the best in the area.
Thank you.
You have big shoes to fill.
I do.
Well, maybe not really big shoes. She's pretty tiny.
But she did set some really high standards, and I-
She did.
-I believe in continuing those.
That's great. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to item number seven, presentation of the monthly capital project report, presentation only.
Okay, well, we moved over to a new year, so all the current projects, 23, 24, have pretty much just commenced, although we've already completed the Alexander pathways, but you'll also see activity going on in Holly Hill Park with some reforestation there.
Ron, can I ask, on the Alexander, does that include the Home Depot driveway?
Yes.
Is that open now?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's not open yet.
It's still not open yet, okay, that's one up.
Yeah, Home Depot needs to complete the restriping in there, because right now it's still striving for parking spaces where that cut through is, so we don't want to cause any issues by opening it up yet.
Okay.
Okay, not too many significant changes, other than for David Memorial, the prep work for the Bridge Footers is in progress. The addition- The additional fill is being brought in to meet design elevations, and the well point is going to be required to, for the storm crossing under the roadway. Meanwhile, at Vision Park, pond is looking good. Clay liner is complete. The block wall is in progress. The bridges have been approved, and you can see that they're getting ready to set up the landings for those bridges. And I'm not going to do a Tamina update, because Mr. Byle is going to do one, so I will end my report there.
Go ahead and address them.
I was pretty excited, because my wife is working on Year of the Month, and she's driving around all the neighborhoods and looking at everything. And she came home, and she said, "You're not going to believe what I just discovered." And I found out today why she was so excited. I took pictures, if y'all want to share, if anyone wants to look at them. But Joseph and his team have been very busy in the last week. I think they got a lot of trees, maybe 100 trees or so planted in the Holly Hill Park. The Holly Hill Park is nothing like what the Holly Hill Park used to be, although it's always been great. There's over 100 trees, and I understand Joseph's in the process of adding another 100 or so trees. I walked the whole thing and took pictures, and I said, "Man, they're not just trees. They're not those little sprouts. These are trees." And that park is just incredible. So hats off to you, Joseph, and your incredible team, and to MDD for making that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to item number eight, the presentation of proposed updates to the IDC.
Counsel, as we've been doing the last couple of months, I'm going to continue giving updates on where we are with planning and zoning on the Integrated Development Code. And tonight, I want to address something that Planning and Zoning has spent a couple of meetings on that I thought was very interesting and will be presenting an unusual item for you to consider later with the IDC. And that has to do with the redevelopment zone, basically from where we are sitting to research forest. There are basically eight, I guess, and really nine pieces of property. And Planning and Zoning was looking at the requirements for development, which currently exist in the IDC, those being a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet and minimum between residential and a building of 40 feet, in some cases 15, and others 30 feet between buildings. And in discussing these limitations on development, Planning and Zoning concluded that their recommendation to city council will be to take the eight potential pieces of property that are there for redevelopment, and as someone requests redevelopment, to look at those on an individual basis, a project-by-project basis. And the example I will use that probably brought Planning and Zoning to that conclusion was a question by Planning, by Stephen C., of the minimum size it would require for building or facility such as Starbucks. And that's well less than 40,000 square feet. And applying the set 30 feet between buildings, 100 feet between this, 50 feet between that, and comparing that to Days Inn, it's four and a half acres, that it's very difficult to have a meaningful redevelopment with just set-in-stone strict standards. So although there's a meeting or so to go, I think that when you get to the redevelopment zone, you're going to see the recommendation from Planning and Zoning to be that each project stand on its own, and that each project be reviewed by Planning and Zoning, and then city council for ultimate approval. And that's kind of where we stand on that. I will also say that, while I have not talked about this before, chapters 23, 4, and 5 are primarily legislative in nature. We've made many changes, but those changes are really dictated by the legislature. So we've gone in and updated with current law to make those chapters fit. So there's, we don't have a lot of flexibility with those chapters. And I'll update you next month on, as we go along, so that members of the public will have time to hear the changes that we're talking about and consider them.
So before you go.
Sure.
You thought you were going to get away with that. Maybe pose a question back to Planning and Zoning, because I know one of the things that I think all of us were hoping for when it came to the redevelopment zone was that it would be a little bit more firm as to what we would kind of do in that area in specific. So just maybe pose back to them, looking at what currently exists there now. If it caught on fire and burned down tomorrow, would they allow it to be rebuilt?
And I think that the answer to most of that question would be no. Let me say this: We had a meeting later, not Planning and Zoning staff, with the owner of Days Inn. Staff has been doing as much as we can to push that redevelopment along. And in meeting with him, he flat-out told us, in some of the design, if we could give him 15 more feet in one of these current conditions, he said, "It would help me so much with the development of the property." And so I think that's another thing that has, I believe Planning and Zoning's position is, let's let these people like Days Inn bring us something creative. And if it really looks good, if it's 15 feet too big, well, maybe that's okay. And we just ought to look at them on a one-by-one basis.
I can appreciate that, but also, as a business owner and a builder, it's very problematic from the standpoint that if you go in and invest in a property, and we've been there on opposite sides of the table, and if you go in and invest in a property, and you come to the city and you ask, it's very indecisive. There's, it's really a roll of the dice as to where we're going to end up. And I think that's very unfair, especially when you have somebody that's coming in to invest into the city to be here and make the city a better place for all, and not have some definitive answers. Because depending upon who's sitting here, or who's sitting there, or even who's sitting in your seat, can dictate all of that. And I think that's what we were trying to eliminate.
And this is a difficulty. This, your point, 100% was raised in Planning and Zoning, and the discussion was, do we want to scare someone off from investing, because they look at our requirements and say, "Well, I can't build a Starbucks in the city, so forget it. I'm out of here." And there's just not a real good answer. Or we have, Planning and Zoning hasn't found one.
Well, the other side of that, from a liability standpoint, in my particular case, it could have cost the city a lot of money had I decided to pursue that. I did not. And I think we need to limit that liability as well in the future where other people don't have it. Honestly, they're not going to take that same, that same side. So I think from a liability standpoint, an investing standpoint, I think there needs to be some solid answers and not so much fluidity in that redevelopment zone. We're not going to make everybody happy, I understand that. We're not going to make all the residents happy that, you know, have chose to live right behind a commercial district. I mean, it's not like that was new development. So, and I realize we're not going to make all the investors that are coming into the city happy, and that's okay. But I think we need to have some solid parameters to work from, rather than it just be fluid. That's just my personal opinion. I don't know how anybody else feels. I'm going to throw on that. I mean, this is part of our ask to redo the IDC was, I think many of us are a little tired of every project having their own set of rules. I mean, we've got, I don't know how many PDVs all over the city, like every person. It's like, there should be a basic one set of rules. If there's a very specific narrow case or something, one little tweak, that's fine. But I also agree, I'm a little disappointed. I was hoping the redevelopment zone, we would, at least coming out of there, would say, "Look, this part of the property, as long as they're, let's just use this, as long as they're providing a XYZ-rated sound barrier, they can build this close to, instead of having the typical vegetative buffer." I think those are some things, some solid suggestions that could come out of P&amp;Z that says, "Yeah, we'll give you the space if you'll do this other step," and the same thing for the, you know, the space between buildings, et cetera. Those are, I would like a little more, hey, this zone, if it's going to be a zone. I mean, because right now, you could say that. It's really not a redevelopment zone if every property owner has to come to us with their idea, and then come back and visit council, and then get council approval. Well, by that point, they're spending a lot of money. I mean, it's one thing to call us up and say, "Hey, I'm thinking about purchasing this property. What's the city allow there?" And Jackie goes, "Well, if you purchase that property, this is what the city allows. If you want to do something different, you're going to have to go through this process. You're going to have to hire architects, and all this stuff before, and then come before council, you know, with all your drawings and stuff, and say, 'Is that okay?'" Well, that's, I mean, that's a lot of money for a, who knows? Maybe council likes it this month, maybe we don't. And it would be nice. I tend to agree. I was kind of hoping for some more solid and...
And I'm going to report this back to Planning and Zoning, and certainly, they can come up with a set of what requirements. Our current ones that exist are why, at least, the owner of, the current owner of the former Texaco says that's why he can't redevelop. And so it's, we've got to come up with, and I'll take this back to Planning and Zoning, we either come up with loose enough ones where Texaco can develop, everyone can develop. I mean, we'll just think about it.
I might suggest, look, you can cut this back, provided you meet this other requirement. So you either have this traditional requirement, or this requirement, right? And it's going to take a little bit of thinking about what are some, what are some ways to handle that. But I agree, if I'm somebody who's looking at purchasing land, because I'm thinking about doing a particular type of development, and I know I need this much space, or I know I want to build in a certain way, I ought to be able to pick up the phone call and call the city before I pick up the phone call to call my real estate agent, right? And I should have an idea about what I can and can't do in this property before I start spending a lot of money there. And telling every developer, well, you know, after you've settled, come show the city exactly what you want, and then we'll decide about setbacks and things like that.
I will take this back to Planning and Zoning with your comments.
I sat on that Planning and Zoning Committee for five years, and I've gone over a lot of the things that you're talking about here in discussions on them. And I know the number one thing that everybody in the city wants, I think everybody on the city council wants, is to clean up that area and make it a vibrant, exciting part of the city. Right now, that area we're talking about is the least attractive part of Shenandoah. Unfortunately, that's one, unfortunately, that's one of the first things that people see when they drive, coming from the north to see Shenandoah, is they see that area. It's imperative that we get it fixed. I've listened to developers, I've listened to business owners, numerous of them have come while I was there, and a lot more since then, to talk about the issues that they have on that area and what it would take for them to develop. The way that it is now, there's no way that we're going to get anybody in there. I mean, the business, most people will not go there. Business people won't. I believe that we have extremely intelligent, very committed people on our P&amp;Z commission, and they will evaluate each opportunity that we have in the best interest for the city. I think that our citizens would love what they're going to come up with. I support, totally support, the idea of being more flexible and letting business people come to us with plans, and letting our incredible people go over it and make decisions, and pass it on for us to rule on it. Just because we're flexible does not make it so that it's good or bad. I'm anxious to see what you come up with and what your team comes up with, Bill.
Sounds good.
There will be still parameters that are going to regulate the zoning in the area. It's just the flexibility to accommodate the development, whatever the developer comes up with to present. I mean, that's the whole point.
No, no problem. I will take all these comments back to Planning and Zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate them very much.
And I know that council will weigh in on this sooner or later anyway, so.
No.
We don't have any opinions.
Let me say this. Part of the reason, there's two or three reasons that we have started making these presentations to you, obviously for, to get city council input, and that's what Planning and Zoning wants. And the other thing is, we like the citizens to hear this, and so they know they can come to Planning and Zoning and put in their input also. So this is, I consider conversation and debate good.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I have more. We have to add number nine, update regarding the Tamina Utility Project.
Mayor and council, good evening. Bill, why'd you sit down? So I'm going to take more than three minutes, probably, of your time to give you an update and answer questions about the Tamina Project. Chris is going to put some exhibits on the screen for us. Would you go to the first one, Chris? And this is a timeline, timeline of events. So where we sit today, 2023, the first thing I want to update you on is the CCN transfer. That's the Certificates of Convenience and Necessity. That was part of the process that had to occur for Tamina to sell their water and sewer CCNs to the city of Shenandoah. We started working on this in March, and that's so, almost nine months ago. Danielle had to leave early. I want to recognize her, though, because she did a lot of this work with the PUC back and forth, also working with Lisa. And so I'm happy to report tonight that we're on the final stages of the transfer being approved by the PUC. We anticipate the administrative court judge to sign off on that December 20th. So we're close, and that's great news. So there was a lot of work that went into that. So, and y'all interrupt me wherever you need to. The next item, 2023, is an update on Phase One of the construction. You've seen it out there, the water and sewer extension from your existing water and sewer lines along Tamina Road going east. That project started last week. It's a 90-day project. It's going very well so far. Will be finished by February 2nd. Weather permitting, happens to be Danielle's delivery date. I was going to mention that today. She had to leave. But can you pull up the exhibit, Chris, just to have the aerial view here? We have digital signs up that we had talked about before, and I think it's been well communicated to the public. I don't know how well you can see this Google Earth overlay, but the green lines on the north side of Tamina Road, that's the extension of the north side of Tamina Road, that's the extension of the sewer line. And around, the circles are the manholes, so that's under construction right now. And then on the south side, the blue lines, or blue line is the water line extension, and the dots are fire hydrants. And I believe along Tamina Road, we have six fire hydrants that will be part of the project. I'll talk about the rest of the project here in a minute with regard to fire. So, this is, this is phase one. This is a project that the city is funding through your ARPA funds, and it's a project that had to happen in order for the rest of the Tamina community to be served with the ARPA funds that the county provided to the city. So, a little less than three months, we'll be finished with phase one. 2024, the city purchases the CCN from the Tamina Water Supply Corporation, and I think Bill's going to give you an update on this.
Thank you. As you know, in 2021, the county approached the city of Shenandoah about providing water and sewer to Tamina. County had ARPA funds, county wanted improvements in Tamina, but the county said that those funds could not be given directly to Tamina. They had to go to a public municipality, and that's why we were asked if we would sponsor this project, and the city agreed to do so. As part of that project, the city agreed to purchase the Tamina, old Tamina Water Supply Certificate of Convenience and Necessity for just over $500,000. That was a benefit to the residents of Tamina because it paid off old, past due debts of the old Tamina Water Supply Corporation, of which, because it's a water supply corporation, each member who buys water is a member of the organization. So, a direct benefit to all of the people who were purchasing water from Tamina. Once the Public Utility Commission approves the purchase, which we hope to be at the end of December, then there is a 30 to 45-day time period in which we will complete that purchase and fund the $550,000 roughly. One of the things I want to make sure that the people of Tamina understand is the $550,000 is coming from the city of Shenandoah. It is not part of the $21 million of ARPA funds. This is a contribution the city has made towards getting them water and sewer.
Okay, so, moving on then to 2024, phase two construction. We're planning on starting that construction probably in the third quarter, late third quarter of next year. Right now, the phase two design, we're working on that. We've got line drawings complete. We have the water plant and water well designed 30% complete. Your staff has that, and they're doing their review as we speak. Well, not exactly as we speak, but you have it. And then, the surveying is complete, so if things move along like planned, we will be in construction for the remainder of the project, which will include the entire Tamina community, east and west of the railroad and Johnson Lane. And then, moving on to 2026, that's the completion date of the entire project, the end of 2026. That's a requirement by the federal government to, you know, utilize the ARPA funds. So, we are currently on schedule, maybe a little ahead of schedule, actually, and we're currently right on budget. We submitted the 30% set of plans of the water plant, and then we updated the cost estimates. We're right at $21 million, which is the funding amount. So, things are going well so far. I want to talk about the average water use. You'll bring up that slide. Thank you. About three years ago, the city council authorized us to complete an updated rate study for you all, and then you ended up adopting the current rates that you have now. So, what we're showing you here, this is information for Shenandoah residents as well as Tamina residents. Currently, the Tamina residents are paying $38.38 for water. This is average user, single-family residential. And when the project is completed and the transfer is complete, the city of Shenandoah will be billing the Tamina community for water. And based on the current rates, the city has, the new water and sewer bill will be $20.91 per resident. So, they're going to see a pretty good drop in what they're paying now, monthly savings of $17.47. And so, just a couple of notes here. We've located all the meters in Tamina. There are 277 meters, and so all of those will be replaced as part of the project, and the customers will be online by the end of 2026. The next and final exhibit, fire hydrants. This was an important element of the project. The project, right now, is designed to have 57 fire hydrants in the community. Engineering standards, we have fire hydrants spaced at 500-foot intervals for residential and 300-foot for commercial. And so, that's our preliminary layout. Just as a matter of information, this was a top priority, obviously, to have fire protection in the community. There will be 57 fire hydrants when the project's completed. And you have plenty of capacity to support that with your fire flows and pressures. We checked all of that. And the last thing I'll tell you, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, but we have been in communication continually with Tamina Leadership Group. Hector Forster handles that for us. We have a meeting scheduled December 6th in the conference room here at City Hall. That's a Wednesday. It's tentative right now, but I believe it's going to happen, and we're waiting to hear back from the Tamina leadership. The purpose of that is to keep them in the loop, current with everything going on, answer questions, and then ultimately to communicate with the residents of Tamina. The staff here has done a great job in helping us do that. Kathy and her folks reach out to the community quite often, and so that's gone very well so far. And we've really enjoyed getting to know the Tamina folks and their leadership group. So, Mayor, you're invited, December 6th.
I'll be there.
And that'll be 5:30, by the way.
I'll be there.
So, that's the conclusion of our update. Do you all have any questions on any of the aspects of the project, where we are? I know Councilman Fletcher probably does.
I have one or two.
Yes, sir.
So, Bill, you said that we started negotiations. We were asked basically in 2021 if we would help sponsor the project?
Yes.
So...
That was when Rich Wheeler was mayor.
Was mayor, correct. So, who was involved in initial or continued negotiation?
I don't know, I can't tell you everyone. I know Steve Toth was involved. Obviously, Rich Wheeler was involved on our side. It was county commissioner, well, it was county judge, and really his assistant, Jason Millsap, that first approached staff about it. And I know that the county judge had a lot of interest in providing the water and sewer to Tamina. So, those are the core people that I remember.
Who from the Tamina Leadership Group was involved in the beginning?
There was no one that I know of in the beginning, other than Mr. Levinson, from time to time, would come and ask. I know he appeared at our city council meetings a time or two saying they wanted some assistance, and I know that he was present at least once or twice at the county commissioners' meetings.
Isn't he the president of the Tamina Water?
He is the chairman of the board of the old Tamina Water Supply Corporation, yes.
So, who agreed to the purchase price with the old Tamina Water Group? Because a comment's been made that nobody, nobody's known about this, and this is all a surprise, and we haven't been forthright, but...
Not only, anyone that made that statement, it's, not only is it not true, in order for the sale of the CCN to be approved, there had to be a majority vote of the members of the old Tamina Water Supply Corporation, and the members by law are every person who purchases water. So, they had a vote, and we've seen the written results of the vote, where the people voted to approve the sale.
So, the property owners voted.
The property, yeah. I'm not sure they have to be property owners, they have to purchase water.
Purchase water, yeah. So, I find it ironic that we have this on the agenda, but yet nobody from the Tamina Leadership Team is present to discuss this in an open forum. Really kind of is troublesome to me, especially when comments, you know, have been made that there's no benefits to Tamina, that we're basically doing this to genocide their community, that we're going to tax them out of their community, that we're going to bill them out. And these are all false comments that are not substantiated. Does Tamina property owners pay property taxes to the city of Shenandoah?
No.
No, they don't. They're part of the county, not the city. So, if they're taxed out, it surely won't be by the city. If anything, if we're looking at saving them, not only providing water and sewer, but saving their monthly billing of $17 plus a month, well, there's one benefit, not to mention 57 fire hydrants. How many, last I looked, when I drove through Tamina, they didn't have any fire hydrants.
And sewage, plus...
No sewages, and sewage is not going to be offered. I believe the comment was made that, you know, anybody can put up a water tower with our name on it, but it can be painted over. Well, yeah, but we don't want to spend a million dollars painting because that's what it costs. So, the last thing, you know, this conservative group up here is going to do is spend a million dollars to repaint it and take their name off of it. So, I mean, if, and again, I find it very troublesome that the so-called spokesperson doesn't attend when an item's on the agenda in specific to address his concerns and makes erroneous statements on a regular basis in our meetings, in which we can't have any rebuttal or discussion or anything else. And this would have been that perfect time for him to end that. So, I just think it's, again, are we truly looking for a viable solution for the citizens of Tamina, or are we looking for a platform that we can become a spokesperson on? I really don't know, but when you don't show up to a meeting like this in an open forum and session to be able to talk about it, I would have to think the latter. So, I'm proud of the things that this council, that this county has done to move forward in providing water and sewer and 57 fire hydrants to make Tamina a better place for their residents to live. Again, we have no desire whatsoever to genocide Tamina into the city of Shenandoah. We want Tamina to remain Tamina for its purpose and to serve our neighbors the best that we possibly can. So, I think the job that, I think Blile and the job that you guys are doing and trying to bring the community together and working with the Tamina Leadership Group and answering their questions on a regular basis. Again, I would have only hoped that they could have been here this evening.
I want to add something to what Councilman Fletcher said, that we are keeping them informed, perhaps not as often as we should have been, but there hasn't been a lot of items to keep them apprised of. But we do have meetings, in fact, just recently, about two weeks ago, Blile staff met with them and brought them up to speed and answered a lot of the questions that, or some of the questions that were raised during our last council meeting. We are scheduling, like Mr. Blile said, another meeting, which we are going to be present at to kind of tack down some of these concerns, some of these issues, and I agree with you. I thought there was an unfair statement made at the last, at our last council meeting, and they were unfair because the knowledge of this process, how we got to where we are with this project have been public, and they have been aware of every step of the way how we got to this point. So, frankly, I'm personally disappointed because I thought that we had conveyed that quite clearly in our past meetings. But be that as it may, you know, we're still, I'm happy to hear that the project is moving along the way, the way it is. That's what I have to say.
I also wanted to add, Mr. Mayor, that in the capital improvement report, we report on all the milestones monthly. So, everybody is well aware of what's going on with this project.
Well, and on top of that, I mean, I believe when we contracted with Blile and Associates to manage the product, project, one of the things that we were adamant about was to have somebody that we communicated with regularly from the Tamina Leadership Team, and my understanding is that's taking place on a weekly basis. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I'll follow up with what the mayor said about a meeting. We did have a meeting two weeks ago tonight. I was in that meeting, and a lot of the information that was presented at the council meeting that Councilman Fletcher's talking about, we corrected, and we had a written handout of the correct information. And so, it was just, a lot of it was misinformation here at the meeting for whatever reason, but we're going to continue to communicate and make sure that people have the right information and current information, and they can always call me if they have questions. So, I think overall, things have gone really well. It's not an easy project, it's a complicated project, but there are going to be bumps along the way. But, you know, we're going to make sure we give out the correct information and correct things that are misstated.
Well, we appreciate the job you guys are doing.
Thank you.
And before we conclude, I just want to bring up the other, the second half of the statements that were made at the last council meeting was that about the west side of the unincorporated Tamina and us controlling growth there. We have absolutely no authority to control who buys and who sells property for what purpose. That's the property owners who are doing that.
Right, we had that discussion at the meeting two weeks ago as well. That's all in the ETJ of the city. The city has no control in their ETJ. The only people that can control is the property owners.
The property owners. I just want to underscore that fact, that we are not trying to control anything that happens in the ETJ. That's not our, not our goal.
Any other questions?
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right. We'll move on to add another 10. Final report of public hearing regarding a special use permit for mixed beverage permit on premise for Lifetime Fitness located at 9,006 Pine Drive.
Mayor and council, as read, the requested use permit is for the Lifetime Fitness facility. This is a mixed beverage on premise. I will note it is without late hours. This is a mixed beverage on premise. I will note it is without late hours. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the application at their last meeting and recommends approval.
So one question on this one. Is this going to be accessible to members only?
No, there are certain areas of the club that are accessible to the public. The cafe, um, areas on the first floor that will service the alcohol permit are open to the public.
Okay.
And no late hours?
But no late hours.
No late hours.
At this point, we're going to open up, uh, this item to a, a public hearing at eight thirty. Is there anyone here to speak on the subject? No one is here to speak on this subject. We're going to close this public meeting at eight thirty-one. Item number eleven. Discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, chapter one oh two, so as to a special use permit for mixed beverage permit without late hours for Lifetime located at nine thousand six pines drive, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of two thousand dollars for violation thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do we have motion?
Motion to approve.
A second. We have motion to approve a Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Is there any discussion?
It's a beautiful facility. We all went on the tour of it not that long ago. And I know y'all did the ribbon cutting, so.
Yes.
It's a beautiful facility and encourage our residents to, uh, become members.
And I think they're setting, uh, I think that this company is setting an example that I sure wish other companies that come in here would do, and that's to label it as Shenandoah. Because so many of our businesses like to say they live, that, that they are located in the woodlands. This company proudly says Shenandoah Lifetime Fitness. And it's the largest in the state of Texas in our little, uh, two-point-two mile community. So, uh, I think that, uh, I'm very proud that they're here. And it's very, very good for our city and it's a great amenity for our, uh, citizens. You can join it, uh, you can go over for drinks and I think they're, they've got classes that you can participate in if you pay for the classes. So it is, uh, something that, and we will certainly, certainly, uh, uh, benefit. Every homeowner will benefit from the tax, uh, uh, dollars that will be coming in from that establishment. Not only from the real estate taxes, but from the sales taxes. So it's going to be a really, really shot in the arm to our city. So we welcome, uh, Shenandoah Lifetime Fitness.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Item number twelve. Discussion and possible action to approve an increase in authorized approvals to the purchasing and procurement policy.
Mayor and council, at the last meeting, it was requested to, um, increase the city administrator's unbudgeted, um, approval from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. And then also when we looked at the policy, um, we did make some proposed changes for, um, assistant directors, department head and directors, um, to raise those items up a little as well. So for the assistant director, department head doesn't need, it would be from a hundred, I mean, for seven hundred fifty dollars to a thousand for budgeted items for the department head and/or directors for, um, items that are not in the budget, one thousand from the, oh, correction. That was just to correct it from nine 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 point nine nine to one thousand, just to make it easier. So that saved for things that were not in the budget. But for department and director heads for items that were specifically detailed in the budget, it raised it from five to seventy-five hundred. And then as you'll see, the city administrator from the fourteen nine 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 point nine nine to two, to twenty thousand. And then anything above that would be city council's authority. And for the, specifically in the budget, it's really just an in-code approval process. That's the difference. So if there's.
Say that again.
For the, for the department heads increases for specifically detailed in the budget, it's just the in-code process. It raises the level from five to seventy-five hundred.
I was going to ask about, you know, like, if it's in the budget and it's budgeted, then.
It's just if, if Kathy's on vacation or she's absent, um, we can approve up to seventy-five hundred. Because a lot of our contracts and prices have gone up because of inflation. So it just keeps the accounts payable process moving, um, without any pauses.
So this caused a significant hardship with the, the current rates? Because I know some other areas and, I mean, the city manager's still with five thousand dollars, which I think is a little low, but that's their city's business. But I just, I want to know, um, is this creating a significant hardship having a fifteen thousand dollar cap or a seventy-five hundred dollar cap or?
So for the, the fifteen to the twenty thousand for the city administrator would be for any items that are not specifically in the budget. The purchase policy does cover anything specifically in the budget that is not a competitive bid that council has to vote on can be approved in the system and process. This was, I believe, from the, um, I believe it was a conversation from the emergency purchase that we had to do for the water main break, I, I believe. Um, so that.
We already have that. I mean, the emergency purchases are already approved.
Well, we approved it, yeah. So I think the theory was is that for those items that were emergency purchases and because prices have gone up, typically if there's an emergency purchase, it's below fifteen. We don't have to bring it back to council for an agenda item for the ratification of the payment. I mean, for the approval to pay, even though we had to do the, we have to pay it anyway because we had to, we had to correct it. But per the policy, I have to bring it for you before we can pay it technically.
Mike, I talked with Kathy about this, basically the same question. And it could be an inconvenience to the city. I mean, if we keep it at fifteen. There is no real downfall other than when it comes to council for that approval, basically. So she still could approve it at twenty thousand rather than fifteen right now. Anything above twenty still got to come in.
Yeah, I mean, we're just, we're just changing the limit. That's what I was asking, like, are we, are we running into situations where, you know, bills aren't getting paid because we, we've approved something above fifteen, like typically for emergency, right? Because otherwise it would come to council for, you know, you need to spend forty thousand dollars on, you know, a new piece of server or something.
It can get down, uh, if there's a change order to a project, things like that can hold a project up a little bit if it goes above fifteen. But for the majority of time.
Even when those are budgeted in, I mean, we've got contingencies built into our projects, right?
We still have to get change. It still goes above, it's within purchasing limit because it's a reapproval.
Okay.
Still comes before us.
So that's the only thing that it really would hold up necessarily. The emergency purchases, thankfully this one was kind of the end of the month, so we already had, you know, we had time. But if, if it was in, you know, if we had, we didn't have a meeting because we just got done, you know, this meeting, we don't have another one until December twentieth, it could hold up the payment to the vendor.
And then I had another question on the policy. It's not been redlined. It's, it's really has to do the recor- it's really more of a verbiage question.
Yeah, this policy is very outdated.
It's what?
It's very outdated and we're working on updating it, but this was, instead of bringing a bunch of edits, we wanted to focus on just what was requested by council at this point and then we'll bring it back.
Uh, uh, having read through this, I was like.
Yes.
What?
There's things that we don't even purchase anymore.
Right.
Yes.
And there's things I'm hoping we quit purchasing and.
Yes.
But just in general to have a, to have stuff specifically listed in a policy that, you know, next August may change, that.
Yeah.
I think there's some, uh, Bill and Kathy and Lisa, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Chew on this a little bit.
We're working on it in finance. Uh, we're trying to do a comprehensive financial policy. Now that I have help, it's been easier to start it. She's also has experience dealing with her previous city's, uh, policy as well. Yeah, it's a little in-creed it. As I was going through it, I was, I was like, but the approval tonight is just to focus on the approval levels and then we'll bring it back.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve a Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion?
I, I would say that, uh, since December's not a very busy meeting, maybe you ought to update it now and bring it back in December. I don't think we have anything that that's pressing between now and then that's going to, I, I, I would like to, to fix this stuff. I would like to see it fixed before we just spot change it.
That's fine.
I mean, we could have fixed it before it came tonight, but.
Well, the idea is we're working on comprehensive, so it's going to take a little bit longer.
I understand, but.
Yeah, so it was trying to include it in one.
This is outdated, so we could have fixed this. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm not asking you to rewrite your whole, I'm saying, take this section and bring this current.
Okay.
All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Not because I'm not in favor of increasing it to twenty thousand, but because I think it needs to be rewritten now to fix it.
No worries.
Okay, three to two, the motion passes.
I still hope we'll bring it back and fix the whole thing.
For sure.
I think I'm hearing a future agenda item.
All right. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to award a contract for wastewater chemical building improvements.
If you'd like, I can give a little background on this.
You mean, other than the seventy thousand dollars savings?
Well, to answer what may be your first question is why wasn't this on the CIP? So this was a line item in the overall wastewater treatment plant improvement project. Of course, knowing that those bids came in like they did, this is one of the items that staff and Blile Engineering discussed with JTR to remove from their bid. And they graciously did so to help drop those numbers down. The work still needed to be done. And so staff reached out to our, to Coroner Maintenance Construction. They do all of our repairs for our chlorinate, chlorination systems. And they got us a price of forty-nine thousand six hundred twelve and eighteen, or eighty cents, sorry, uh, which is significantly lower than JTR's one hundred and twenty thousand. And so staff is recommending, uh, having Chlorinator Maintenance perform this work, uh, for us for that price. The, the work needs to be done. Uh, we just, staff was confident that we could get a better price from Chlorinator, Chlorinator Maintenance when we looked at the whole bid proposal from JTR and we were able to.
So is this going to cause an amendment to the budget or we've already budgeted this?
No, so this will be, this will be, um, separately, we, there's, uh, there's cash available for it in the water sewer enterprise fund. So it, this will be handled separately from JTR's contract, totally separate contract with Chlorinator Maintenance.
You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve a Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion?
Thank you for saving us seventy thousand dollars.
Anytime. It makes me happy too.
You will continue on the full employment program.
Got one more year, huh?
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Item fourteen, discussion and possible action to adopt the minutes of August twenty-third, September thirteenth, and September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three regular meetings.
Wish to approve all three as read.
Second.
Motion to approve a Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Raymaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for October twenty-twenty-three. You have a motion.
So moved.
You have a motion by Councilman Brad, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Raymaker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item sixteen, civil club update, civic club update, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start by revisiting a very small event that we had a couple of weeks ago. Our first, I wouldn't say annual, but that would just be to razz, that'd be a little bit. Our first fall into fun event. I'll just start by saying one word and that was wow. Even I was totally amazed by first how everything was run and set up, how many people attended. But wow, was the event just amazing. The feedback that we got from the folks that were there was, was that it was unexpected, but in a incredibly positive way, um, that we overdid, or like almost to a point of, they, they just couldn't believe that we had accomplished so much, especially with it being a first-time event for the city. With it being a first-time event, we found new opportunities and things that we could improve on. Uh, we did hear that we, that some of the folks would like to have additional lighting, uh, in the, some of the ride areas that we had in the parking lot. Uh, and also we, it was so overwhelming that the parking, uh, actually became, uh, we'll say an issue, but it was, it was too much. So we are going to, uh, see about working with Quest next year and incorporate, uh, assuming we can incorporate that parking scenario uh, into our fall into the event fund for year number two. And I definitely, even though I kind of steal your thunder, I would like the, the city's input when, uh, we get to the city administrators saga things. So, the couple of things that we have going on, coming up, uh, is our actual biggest event of the year, and that's the Lighting of the Angels. That will be coming up on November the twenty-eighth. That's the first Tuesday after Thanksgiving. It will be from six P M. to eight P M. over here, uh, in the municipal complex. As usual, we will be setting up a winter wonderland, uh, for all of our residents to enjoy. For everybody that may be listening, we will also be posting stuff on social media. This is a three-day event for the civic club from a volunteer perspective. So for anybody that would like to volunteer, this is not three days of working nonstop, although for some of us it may be. But for the, the residents that want to just come help set up, get things in motion, help decorate, or even if they just want to come up and socialize with other, uh, folks around, come up for an hour. We, we're going to start pretty much at nine A M. Monday to, Monday, Monday to actually start getting all the main decorations set up. On Tuesday to kind of finalize all the, the minutia of things. Uh, and then Wednesday is our teardown after that. But again, the event itself is Tuesday night from six P M. to eight P M. So, I was going to pretend I was going to do this all in one breath, but there's too many things happening that night to even think about doing it. So I'm going to run through these. You're welcome to ask at the end what some of these may be. I'll, I'll do my best to explain things if I think anything sounds kind of weird. So we will have Santa. We will have our snow slide. We'll of course have DJ Gordy spinning the tunes all night. We will have the magician show again. There will be a lighter to Santa's booth, uh, and, and an elf, uh, Grinch ornament craft. Uh, we will have snowball races back. Uh, I, I wasn't here when they had them the last time, I think in twenty-seventeen or eighteen, nineteen. But from what it's been described, uh, I may see if I can even peel away and do a snowball race myself. We're going to have a three sixty photo booth, so if you haven't ever seen that, the cameras go around. And so instead of just kind of posing for the picture, you can be active. So if you're, especially if you're dressed up or you're wanting to act silly, the camera's moving around and you get a video of that kind of thing. If you ever think of like the Matrix when they're like, you know, doing some kind of action thing, it was like that kind of setup.
Will it make me look thinner?
Was it?
Will it make me look thinner?
That can't happen.
So we, and, and there will be like props and stuff to make that, uh, even more entertaining. Uh, camel rides, that's always one of our most busy activities. Petting zoo, the pony carousel as usual. Uh, we will have a mechanical bull who for the evening will be identifying as a reindeer. The Grinch, uh, they will, the, uh, beautiful angels that we had before, the juggling elves, the Smores table. Uh, the train will be out here again, uh, Frosty. We will have a Christmas Mickey and Minnie Mouse for the evening. There will be an actual sleigh for Santa pictures this year. So that's will be something new for us. There will be a, uh, we're going to have some really decorative balloon arches, uh, as you come into the event. I believe it's going to be kind of right here as you come in from the, the east side, coming into the activity itself. Uh, there will be some toy soldiers that go with that. And of course some balloon artists. And of course, some balloon artists, the cool elf on the shelf character that was walking around last year. Uh, and there will be a candy inflatable bounce house there as well. See, there was no way I was doing that in one breath. So, any questions? Will Barbie be there?
How do we volunteer?
Did you invite Taylor Swift?
So honestly, volunteer work, just show up. So on Monday, we'll start at nine, we typically get done around four or five o'clock. If you just want to come over to the municipal complex where we actually do the Lighting of the Angels, just show up. If you want to look for Debbie or myself, it'll be pretty easy to identify all the folks that are putting together reindeer and sleigh and Christmas trees, uh, and those kind of things. And like I said, you can come for an hour, a couple hours, it's a, it's a very social, uh, event. We'll be playing some Christmas music and those kind of things, uh, on the way. And then on, uh, Tuesday, same thing, we'll be starting about nine o'clock. We're usually done at two or three o'clock, so that gives you plenty of time to go back home, put on some Christmas attire, and come back to the actual event when it starts at six. Uh, and then, um, Wednesday for teardown, we'll be starting at nine o'clock again. Again, just show up, we're just taking everything back down, putting it back together so that we have it for Lighting of the Angels twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Outstanding.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right, item seventeen, city attorney updates.
None tonight.
City administrator updates.
Uh, I just have a couple, Council, and I want to thank Charlie and the Civic Club, Debbie, for all their work on the Fall, Fall Into Fun Festival. It was, just as Charlie said, fabulous event. The weather was great, the turnout was great, the enthusiasm was incredible. We heard so much good feedback after the event and, and during the event. Um, I love the little videos that Charlie started putting out for that event on social media and the, the ones that he's doing for Lighting of the Angels. I think that's, that's been super helpful and, and just real appea- an appealing way to, um, to support the overall communications efforts that the city does for these events. Um, so again, thank you to Debbie, Charlie, the Civic Club, it was fabulous. Um, next thing, the Public Works Department, you may have seen this on social media, uh, they recently visited Hauser Elementary. Um, they sent the bucket truck over to a Careers on Wheels event. So this featured the bucket truck and a lot of other equipment and vehicles. Uh, the kids got to see vehicles and speak with the workers. Um, other equipment included fire trucks, police vehicles, an excavator, a dump truck, a bus, and an ambulance. So that was really exciting for, for those kids to get to see these things up close and, and talk to the people who actually operate these, these vehicles and this equipment. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, I wanted to ask Jackie to provide any development highlights, any updates for Council.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, a quick update, um, earlier in the year, we implemented a, uh, permitting process with the Woodlands Townships for the homes in the Grogan's Forest area. And, uh, if my math serves me right, we have been able to successfully process about twenty percent, um, applications, twenty, it's twenty-six, um, applications that have been filed with us that we have processed. It's about twenty percent of homes in that neighborhood that we have been able to facilitate. Got positive feedback from residents and, and the township. Great process there. And we, uh, just recently issued signed permits on the Adriatic Cafe and the Gloria's, uh, restaurant, and so we should start seeing, identifying markers on those buildings.
Does that mean they're gonna take down the old sign?
They are revamping the old sign.
Maybe no more, no more free Wi-Fi anymore.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Council inquiry.
Yeah, um, Joseph, you might want to give just a brief update on the lane addition that they're doing at Research and Grogans.
So I know that, uh, the remaining portion of that, and this was a project by Commissioner Riley, uh, they, they've already installed the acceleration lane. Uh, if you're going south on Grogan's Mill and then turning west on the Research Forest, uh, the second part of that is a deceleration lane or a dedicated turn lane. So when you're going west on Research Forest and you're gonna be turning north onto Grogan's Mill. Um, the, I, I know that that's still in the works, they were, they're waiting on some utilities to relocate their vaults. And I think that's where we're still at right now for that project.
Also, I just really want to express my appreciation to the Civic Club because we've never asked you to do anything this close together. I mean, the, the, the old format for Halloween, um, yeah, did require some, some candy distribution, but this is a whole new level. So, and then right on top of it to move to Lighting of the Angels, just want to express my appreciation for everything that you did. And I'm gonna get out there and help you move some stuff around, so that's how, that's how much I appreciate what you've been doing. That's it.
Thank you. Council, pleasure.
Joseph, is there any, uh, improvements heading eastbound on Research Forest?
From the Commissioner?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, John, have you heard any, any news?
I have read that Precinct Three Commissioner is planning on doing a lane addition, I think it's a decel lane going westbound.
Going eastbound?
Westbound.
Westbound.
Eastbound, um.
Deceleration westbound.
No, I'm sorry, you're right, eastbound.
Eastbound, yeah.
Yeah. And so I don't, we're not involved with that. Uh, I would go back to the previous question though, uh, that, uh, decel lane going westbound, that has been held up because of the entergy pole relocation. And, uh, so my understanding that has been completed and I informed Commissioner Riley's office of that, so that should start, that was the last remaining thing. And so that should start anytime soon.
Yeah, I thought I saw him out there this week, moving that around. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, and I just want to say for statement of fact, since I was the only one called out, because I'm sure I was the one that made the request to not make it personal, but, um, uh, I believe last time when, uh, when Chairman Chris was here speaking that, uh, and of course I was called out tonight for unfairly, uh, I unfairly warranted Mr. Chris and his opportunity to speak freely, um, against others and call him out individually by name. I did not hear him call out and demean anybody last time that he spoke, other than identify what he was doing in the race and why. So, uh, I don't think that's something that we want to continue with in any of the forums that we have or any of the citizens' inquiries. Um, I think it was a good precedent that we set last time when that took place and people were trying to call out people individually. And I think we just need to leave the individuality out of it and focus on the position and what people are gonna do in that position or who they would like to support, uh, rather than trying to tear other people down, um, and call out their integrity in question. I think that if we set that standard here, that hopefully other cities and our county will, will follow. So, uh, statement of fact is that we did not allow, uh, Chairman Chris to call out anybody individually or by name or demean them or, uh, attack their integrity. And then finally, I just want to wish, uh, uh, all staff, you know, every year, at my house anyways, when we get together for Thanksgiving, one of the things that we share is, uh, what we're grateful and thankful for. And so I just want to wish y'all a very happy Thanksgiving, our residents a very happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, let you know that, uh, and I think I speak well of all, all, uh, council, uh, here that we're very thankful that we have the opportunity to serve with you and be a part of your team. So thank you for all that you do and we, I hope that you and your family have a, a happy and wonderful Thanksgiving.
Amen.
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 I only have one, one thing in closing. Uh, I wanted, I wanted to note that our outstanding, um, city administrator doesn't like to take credit for things, uh, but she keeps things moving so smoothly here, uh, that it just, it's a joy to, to be, uh, on the city council. Uh, and knowing that, uh, you're taking care of your employees, everyone is happy, the city, uh, the police department, all the employees I talked to are just tickled to death to work here, and I think it's because of your leadership, Kathy. Uh, and also wanted to note, uh, she won't tell you this, but she was just elected president of the Texas Women's, uh, lead, Texas Women Leading Government, uh, group. She's the, the new president. Uh, she's also very active in leadership Montgomery County and is, is serving our city very well and representing us very well. Thank you and congratulations for your, uh, appointment.
Thank you.
Do I refer to her as Madam President? I'm good. Wish everyone a happy, merry Thanksgiving, whatever.
Yeah, I'll reiterate everybody else's comments, the, the Fall Festival was really fantastic and I think everyone really enjoyed themselves. Uh, walking in, it was nice to see everybody playing and everybody having fun and, and it was a great, great afternoon activity. So kudos to Civic Club for really pulling it off and, um, look forward to having more and more of those. So that was very good. And I'm gonna follow up on, uh, I don't know if we need to, um, restate our code of conduct for, for speakers, but, uh, I, I heard actual names being called and I thought that was, that's probably something we need to, I don't know if we need to write it down a little bit differently or word it a little differently, but, um, I'm a little, I was a little disturbed about that. I mean, some of the speakers were great, they, you know, they just came in and said, said stuff, but some of the people got really, uh, again, it got in the name calling and I think that's something we need to consider how to, how to better approve. On the Tam and the Thing, I've asked for some numbers and, um, I, I, people ask what are the benefits? Uh, we, we put seventeen dollars and people don't think that's a lot of money, it's two hundred dollars a year. Uh, for the community, it's, uh, being on Shenandoah Water is gonna save them as a community over fifty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, by paying off their debt, we relieved every household of approximately two thousand dollars that they owed. When you, when residents or, or people who don't even live there ask what the city's doing for Shenandoah, that's real money. We took money out of our, uh, and, and paid down your debt. And we're gonna save you money year after year after year. Quality water, quality sewer, um, all taken care of and, um, at a tremendous cost savings. And so in addition to that, we also dedicated land, which we estimate somewhere between half a million to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's now gonna be dedicated to taking care of a water tower. And so the city of Shenandoah is doing a lot for the Tam and the Community and we're gonna continue to do that, so.
Good points, Mike.
Very good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
I just want, I, a couple of things. I was fortunate enough to attend a Quest Academy, uh, uh, speaking engagement to a whole bunch of second graders. And, uh, the, those of you who have dealt with, uh, small children will, will appreciate the fact that they're very rambunctious and hard, and very hard to control. But it was a joy, uh, it made me feel a lot younger too. Uh, that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is that, um, we officially didn't wish our veterans, uh, uh, Happy Veterans Day. I just want to remind everyone that, that it's not just, just that one day that we should thank a veteran for the sac- sacrifice that they've made. You see a veteran, you see an old man with a hat that says Army Veteran or Navy Veteran, just thanking for his service. It, it goes along, but being a veteran myself, uh, it goes a long way. It makes that, the day just a little brighter. So, uh, I want you to keep that in mind. And, and I want to echo also, uh, you know, uh, have a, a happy Thanksgiving, safe, and with your families, with, with your loved ones. That's all I, I have to say. Uh, all right, we're gonna move on to executive session, so we're gonna recess at, uh, nine oh four and we're gonna discuss, uh, five acres of, uh, city-owned property, governed by, uh, Texas government, uh, five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, uh, economic development negotiations.
When you start, pass it on. You're talking in passing the talk sheet.
All right, we're gonna resume our, uh, council meeting at, uh, nine, nine twenty-nine. Returning from executive session, no action was taken. The time is nine thirty, so we're gonna adjourn this session, uh, the Shenandoah Council Meeting for eleven fifteen to twenty-three.